Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Lacey Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Will everyone please rise up to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, first reading of ordinance 2016-13, setting the salary for the chief of police position.
Ordinance attached to Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, amending an ordinance to Tedlin, ordinance attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, affixing and determining salaries, wages, and compensation to the officers and police and members of the governing body of the township. This is for the chief of police salary 2016 through 2018.
Motion, move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-179, authorizing the execution of a contract with Megan Bennet Clark as bond counselor.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Megan Bennet Clark, Esquire of Fluff, Walworth, LLP, as bond counselor for the township of Lacey. She has switched firms and that's why we're redoing this resolution this evening.
Motion, move it, second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-180, amending the contract for township prosecutors.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, amending the contract with Steven Sabarsky of Sidney Holzapple and Sabarsky as township prosecutors to add Morgan Montana, Ron DeLigni, and Alexander Becker as additional alternate prosecutors.
Motion, move it, second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-181, awarding a contract for Phase Two of the HVAC replacement for the police department.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Performance Mechanical Corporation for the HVAC rooftop unit replacement Phase Two for Lacey Township Police Department. Total amount of this contract is $163,000.
Motion, move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-182, awarding a contract for the realignment of veterans.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the Veterans Way realignment project to Earl Asphalt Company. This came in at a very, very reasonable price, $124,513.13. As you know, we will be closing off Veterans Way at Manchester and rerouting that past the Water Tower down to Adams there at 44 Manchester Avenue. It's a project that we've been working on with the county to obviously make that intersection much safer so that the county can widen the roadway for additional stacking lanes.
Motion, move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-183, awarding a contract for the Bayberry Village Road Improvement Project.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Johnson Baron for the Bayberry Village Resurfacing Project Phase Two. Again, these prices, this is going to be awarded to Johnson Baron. These prices came in at a very good price. We're able to do the base bid plus alternate A and B. The total amount of this project is $306,290.75. And again, both of these projects, we do have plans to start underway immediately so we can have them finished before school reopens.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-184, awarding a contract for bulk bituminous material.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for bulk bituminous material to Brick Wall Corporation.
Motion, second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-185, awarding a contract for the purchase of a Pierce Pumper Tanker.
Aren't we all this time?
I'll make a motion to Tedlin.
Alright guys, I was just playing.
Wanted to see who was awake back there.
A resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Pierce Manufacturing Incorporated to ride a Pierce Arrow XT Pumper Tanker for the Forked River Fire Company. We are doing this through a cooperative pricing system with the Houston-Gavelston Area Council. The total cost of this truck is, let's see here, $748,940.73. There may be some additional credits that we will see, but it should not be any more than what is in the contract here.
Move it, make that motion down. And I'll second it.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes.
Alright, you guys are good to go now.
Resolution 2016-186, authorizing the execution of a contract with the chief of police.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an agreement with the chief of police, Michael DeBella. This is a five-year contract expiring December 31st of 2021.
Move it, second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-187, appointing a full-time police officer.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Michael Baldessari as a full-time police officer with the township of Lacey. Mr. Baldessari is being appointed effective August 22nd, 2016. This is through the inter-local government transfer program that civil service allows. He is coming from the Ocean County Sheriff's Department.
And just to note, he's replacing the chief of parole.
That is correct.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-188, appointing a confidential assistant for the police department.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing Scott Wright as a position of confidential assistant/policeman for the Lacey Township Police Department. This is a clerical position of no more than 30 hours per week. This young man will be assisting our detective bureau with the functions of firearms IDs and approvals for that and various property and other related duties assigned by the chief of police.
Motion, move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-189, authorizing various promotions in the CWA clerical unit.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing various promotions and lateral changes in the CWA clerical unit for the township of Lacey pending promotional procedures by civil service. We are promoting Whitney Taps, Rochelle Lindstra, and Laura Ekloff to the next level in the CWA. They are all provisional pending the outcome of civil service exams.
Move it, second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-190, authorizing seasonal laborers for the Public Works Department.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the employment of a seasonal laborer for the Department of Public Works for the summer months. This is just one additional labor that we're adding on that Casey had requested. It's all paid for through grant money.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-191, certifying all members of the governing body have reviewed the audit.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, certifying to the local ordinance for that all members of the governing body have received the annual municipal audit for the year 2015.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas? As you all noted from reading the audit, there were no comments or suggestions made by our owners. We have a very clean audit this year.
Resolution 2016-192, authorizing a special item of revenue in the 2016 budget.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in 2016 municipal budget, Chapter 159 of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA 48-4-87. This is the Alcohol Education Rehab and Enforcement Fund. The fund's coming back to Lacey Township as $2,658.98.
Move it, second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-193, authorizing the release of maintenance bond for Phase One of the police department HVAC project.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a maintenance guarantee for Performance Mechanical Corporation Incorporated for the HVAC rooftop unit replacement Phase One for the Lacey Township Police Department. This has been reviewed by the engineering firm and has been recommended to be released.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-194, authorizing the release of the performance bond for White Oaks.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee for White Oaks at Lacey conditioned upon the posting of a new performance guarantee. This is for White Oaks application. This is a reduced developers bond. It has been reviewed and recommended by the township engineer to reduce the bond. Do you have a motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Sure, yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
State. Resolution 2016-195, authorizing the release of performance bond for Seabreeze at Lacey Phase Two.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing reduction of a site improvement performance guarantee for Seabreeze at Lacey Phase Two conditioned upon the posting of a new performance guarantee. Again, this has been reviewed and recommended by the township engineer.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-196, authorizing the cancellation of taxes for disabled veterans.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2016 taxes due on a property granted to 100% disabled veterans exemption and refund the resulting credit of the balance. This is on block 878.01, lot 5.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-197, authorizing the cancellation of taxes for properties acquired by township.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2016 taxes due on property due to the property being donated to the township becoming tax exempt. This is block 1162 lot 1, 1197 lot 41, and 1197 lot 41, again, I guess there's a typo here, but I will get that corrected. But there are three lots that we just did take back from the Clayton family that have been donated to the township.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-198, authorizing a lien on block 927 lot 45 for property maintenance.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the director of public works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up of the property located at 919 Siegel Drive, which is block 927 lot 45, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost. This was a special garbage pickup due to the fact that the house was taken. They cleaned up the house, threw it all in the front yard, and expected the garbage coming to pick it up. We don't do house cleanouts, and it was a bill of $300 that is now being placed on the property as a lien.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-199, authorizing a lien on block 206 lot 5 for property maintenance.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the director of public works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up of the property located at 1619 Beach Boulevard, block 2 of 6 lot 5, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost. This is basic property maintenance. Again, we become landscapers and mowing the grasses of these properties. It's $104.05 that will be placed on the property as a lien.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-200, authorizing a lien on block 822, did I do that wrong?
Nope.
Lot 5 for property maintenance.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the director of public works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up of the property located at 1012 Laurel Boulevard, block 822 lot 5, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost. Again, this is for landscaping services of $223.22.
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-201, authorizing a lien on block 242, block 12 for property maintenance.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the director of public works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up of the property located at 107 Oakwood Place, block 242 lot 12, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost. Again, property maintenance, $85.27.
Move it, second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-202, authorizing a lien on block 187 lot 9 for property maintenance.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the director of public works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris cleaning up of the property located at 1401 Kaylee Drive, block 187 lot 9, and authorizing placement of a lien against said property for said cost. Again, property maintenance, $170.06.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-203, authorizing the refund of the dock rental fee.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of monies charged for the municipal docks. This is a prorated amount. This person has sold their boat. They no longer have use of the slip, and we had prorated it for the time being that it was in the docks. They're getting a refund of $725 from the initial $1,100 fee.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-204, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it, second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Resolution 2016-205, authorizing the payment of township bills.
No, he didn't. I was just talking to him. I actually, here it is. Resolution attached to Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills. Now, mind you, this has been five weeks since we had a meeting, so it's $7,234,874.37.
That's all?
That's it.
Move it, second.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kennas?
Yes. Monthly reports?
Municipal clerks, now, these monthly reports don't cover that bills list. For the month of June, the municipal clerk's office collected receipts the amount of $7,935.27. Community development for the month of May collected receipts in the amount of $164,719.25. For the month of June, road opening permits the amount of $2,025. Recycling commodity the amount of $730. Municipal docks in the amount of $6,600. That was for May. Municipal docks for June was in the amount of $4,400. Municipal court for the month of May was in the amount of $25,642.13. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of June 9th, 2016?
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of June 9th, 2016?
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Add-ons?
Absolutely not. I think there was a "not" tonight.
From the committee, Deputy Mayor Kenny Pollak.
Thank you, mayor. I would just like to, again, as we've all reiterated up here, thank the police for their service. It's a great night for our police department as a whole, and especially the administration that has moved up the ladder. Definitely in these uncertain times, as we've seen in Dallas, the police need our support, and they need our prayers, and we want to support them. So I wish the gentlemen that were promoted tonight nothing but the best moving forward. They have the support of all of us up here. I think I can say that without hesitation or reservation, and really appreciate everything that they do. And another partially-related note, July 8th was on a conference call with Congressman MacArthur, Sheriff Mastrinardi from Ocean County, Sheriff Stansfield from Burlington County was on that call. There were probably a lot of stakeholders on that call as well. And the two topics were heroin and security and safety terrorism. So I just wanted to make a brief report on that call. Our congressman has 18 bills pending with specific regard to heroin treatment, prevention, enforcement, and recovery. And he believes that all 18 will be passed, so that's good news for not only his purview in 67 counties, 67 municipalities, Burlington and Ocean, but indeed throughout the state, people will rebenefit from that. So, good news all around. Again, keep comments brief, and congratulations to our police department for the wonderful work they do for all of us in keeping us safe. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Pete. Community man McDonald?
Thank you, mayor.
Just want to congratulate Chief DeBella tonight in becoming the chief, changing to the guard. They do an outstanding job. The captain, two new lieutenants, got a work cut out for us. The Beach Bash was fantastic. Our historian, John Parker, did an outstanding job. A lot of people were out there. It was a beautiful day. Then we had the fireworks on July 4th, which were fantastic. I too was on that conference call, and the one thing that I came about was that congressman's got a bill. I'm a little confused by this. I thought this was already in place. It's called the Blue Line.
Thin Blue Line.
The Thin Blue Line, which is if one of our police officers, God forbid, would be killed in the line of duty, they would be the same as killing a federal agent, which is automatically that penalty and things like that. So I'd always thought that was in place. Obviously, it's not, and I was mistaken on that. But I think that's a great thing, and I hope it gets passed. The other thing I need to report on is the recreation, the three-on-three basketball league. They had to expand it. They had so many kids sign up, they had to go an extra day. Also the same with the volleyball. The tennis didn't do as well, and there's some reasons for that, but hopefully maybe make sure we can get that going up. But that's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Community man Juliana?
I don't have much, mayor, but thank you. Veronica touched on a few things which we went over with the realignment of Veterans Way. That is going to be closed for a while. I don't know about how long. Do you, Veronica?
They have a 45-day window to complete the project. There was liquidating damages, you know, weather pending, of course.
Yeah, the most of the weather stays, and I've noticed some work being done over there with the sidewalks there or something.
That's, um, that's actually Walters for Phase One. Yes, that's Phase One with the Walters. But there has been markouts. Earl being on-site over here at the Lacey Family Apartments is also the contractor over here, so they have been over there looking at the site and already having the markouts called and everything. And we do have a pre-construction meeting as of this coming Monday, so we are moving right along.
Other than that, there's not much happening with Public Works, other than a few projects we have in town. But I, again, wanted to thank the police department, Chief DeBella. It was an honor to see all these blue people in the room like that. That's our protection. That's our backbone. It's what we do here. And I know we have a retired police officer in there, and he could relate to that right, Mr. Downey. It's the best. It's the best. Lacey Township does have the best. There's no doubt about it in everything we do. And up here, we know that, because we all work together to strive to make it happen that way. Sometimes, I guess, we make decisions that are not feasible to a lot of people, but we do what we think is best for the taxpayers and the people of Lacey Township. That's all I really have, mayor, and enjoy the rest of the summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Community man Quinn?
Going to be just as brief. Just, again, congratulations to Chief DeBella, our new captain, our new lieutenants. We've got a great performance, and we have a great command staff going forward. I think the town's in very good shape moving on from today forward. So the only other thing I just want to mention, which, you know, I'm not the recreation director, but Lacey Day is coming up.
Oh! Oh!
I have to tell you, it's nice when you're at the end of the food chain to be able to have something to say that's not repetitive, so.
That's my partner. He got me. He's got my back.
We actually do have one more meeting before Lacey Day, so I'm sure the other four gentlemen are going to bring it up. But I just want to throw it out there, it's only 13. We have Lacey Day this year. Again, all the food is free. Rotary donates every year. It does all the work preparing the food. So, you know, try and mark it on your calendar. If the weather's nice and not terrible, it's a really nice day to come out. Enjoy your community, so. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Gary. I'll be long.
I got you on the clock there.
I'd just like to congratulate the new chief and the lieutenants. I just wanted a couple reminders. I want to thank Exelon for the fireworks display. We always consider Exelon a partner in the town, and they help out every year. I just want to remind people that meet the mayor 6:30 every third Tuesday of the month at the library, and also that the appellate court overturned a ruling requiring that towns meet a backlog of affordable housing needs that we've accumulated, so that's actually good news for the township. And with that, I'll open it up to the public. It's public committee. Mr. Wallace?
Thank you. Bill Moss just came down towards the beach. I'll make this real quick. I have three things I want to question. First, a month ago, I asked about Jones Road, if it was possible to get a no turn, right-hand turn.
They told me that they have it on their...
On their jet.
On their jet, yes.
Second thing is... Couple of people have asked me about beach badges during summer months when a lot of my grandparents have grandchildren now. They're wondering if it's possible for us to look into some way of having one-day beach badges for children, say, 5 to 12, different color for each day of the week.
Okay. We've talked about that, and unfortunately, you know, there's an expense to that, because now you have to create a different badge or a different color or something like that, and there's an expense to doing that. So it's not something that's financially feasible for us to do, to create that. I mean, the badges for the whole season are $5, so I, they're not, you know, they're not cost prohibitive to begin with.
Yeah, as they're saying, when grandkids come down, they got four grandkids, it's going to cost them $20 for one day just to take the kids there, and they don't even get to use it.
But our costs increased because of that, and, you know, unfortunately, I'd have to increase the cost of badges most likely to do that.
Okay.
So I'm not saying that a daily badge wouldn't be $5.
We don't have badges. Check us on Metalogue, do we?
No, that's not one of our recognized badges.
There are beaches in town, out off of Bayway, Metalogue Beach, where there's nobody, you can go out there and just sit on a beach and just bring your swing set out there and just play. So that's a nice idea.
Third thing I wanted to bring up was recently I got to see the governor decided to stop all road projects. This project for about $775 million. According to what they've stopped in Lacey, it comes to $284,000. And it's a shame when you look at it, and one of them says it's, one of his road projects is improvements on East Lacey Road, $213,000.
That's a grant that we got. It's going to be more than that, that project. But right now, I don't have any authorization to proceed on that. That's not something we funded in this year's budget. So hopefully, by the time we're ready to fund it, we have 18 months to award it from the date of notification, that those funds will now become available to us.
The next thing is way back in September, February, a lot of people were complaining about all the pumps and hot holes on Lacey Road, and somehow the word got out that they were thinking of repaving, not Lacey Road, Route 9, because the pumps were so bad. They were thinking about repaving Route 9. So it was a state road. Somebody from the state said that they had been planning to do it in June. According to what they knocked off in June, they have $70,433 set aside for Route 9 from Jones Street right away to Long Goats and Berkeley. They're going to spend $70,000. It looks like they're just going to patch little bits.
That's correct. It wasn't curb-to-curb paving, so to speak.
Okay, now what about the other end? Okay, now what about the other end? Are we going to sit at the township and just say, to hell with it, let the pumps all be there, let the hot hole all be there down by the...
I know what the other end you're saying. I mean, it is, again, it is a request that's put forth to them. I, you know, I can't tell you why they chose to do the north end versus the south end.
Let me ask.
Because they did just recently do the south end, and that's probably why they're thinking that they don't... because they did from somewhere in Ware Town all the way up to Lakeside Drive by Mount Mistake.
Lakeside Drive to the bridge and past the bridge is where Bay Avenue and that area is terrible.
You're a hundred percent correct.
And I'm looking, because, you know, you're only talking about two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in Lacey. My gosh, Manchester getting nine hundred thousand, Berkeley's getting a couple hundred thousand, Ware Town's getting eight hundred and thirty thousand.
But what are... but what are they... wait, are they getting that through TTF funds? Is it the town is actually getting it, or the state is going in and doing projects in their towns?
It says it's a state project that...
All right, so that's a state doing the projects?
State project.
Okay, so that's different than what the two thirteen we're getting?
It's just the road projects that they closed down, is what it is.
Yes. Yeah.
You know, but it seems like they're not getting very much in Lacey for the eleven million dollars or so that you give them from the power plant.
Yeah, but Bill, you got to look at... maybe not in this calendar year we're not getting it, but we had a multimillion-dollar project with the Lacey Road Route Nine intersection, which was in the pipeline unfortunately for probably ten years to get it done. You know, we get it some years, other towns get it some years, so it does fluctuate back and forth. We're in the pipe just like everyone else, but when we have a large project like that done, then they try and divert some of the money to other municipalities surrounding us.
And the only state road that we have running through our town is Route Nine. I mean, those other towns might have additional state highways that we don't have, you know, that we don't... we don't have. So that could be one of the reasons why they're seeming to get more of the pie, so to speak.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Anything else?
Regina, the fans of Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach. I'd like to give my congratulations to new Chief DeBella and happy retirement and new career to outgoing Chief Dave Perrota. I've always been very impressed with the work of the Lacey Police Department, and as new Chief DeBella said, that Dave raised the bar. And the statistics that were reported in Chief Pepprota's final retirement message to the public on Sunday, July tenth, and then subsequently quoted in the Measory Park Press on Tuesday, July twelfth, were just amazing. And I have an extra copy of that article in case anyone's keeping a scrapbook.
I'm not keeping a scrapbook.
Pass it on. There aren't too many print copies in the newspaper around anymore. I need to make a little disclaimer now that I'm definitely speaking as a member of the public. A very important day is approaching that many people may not be aware of, Monday, July twenty-fifth. This is the deadline for filing petitions to run for a seat on the Lacey Township School Board. It's a very important job that more citizens should take seriously and consider running for this position. While it is a volunteer elected position, it is extremely important, and there are three seats open this year. The New Jersey School Board Association website has a downloadable candidate kit with details. The county clerk has a petition for anyone wishing to put their name on the ballot. This is what it looks like. Only ten signatures of registered voters are required, and one can be the candidate's name. It's a very simple process. Visit www njsba.org for more information. The deadline again is Monday, July twenty-fifth. Effective school board leadership is the key to student achievement, and that quote appears on the NJSBA website. And one other thing I'd like to mention tonight is an alternative and simple means of earning some extra money for our schools, and that is the Box Tops for Education program. Many people have seen the Box Tops on Cheerios and other General Mills products. What I've recently learned, although it seems to have been available for a while, is that the Box Tops for Education program is electronic. In addition to collecting and submitting the physical Box Tops, which people can still do and give to any school, the public can sign up on boxtopsforeducation.com. It uses the number four instead of the word F O R, and adopt one of the Lacey schools, Fort Good River Cedar Creek, Little Harbor, Mill Pond, any one. You just use the zip codes on the website, and after you sign up on Box Tops for Education, then sign up your Shoprite Price Plus card on shopriteformyschool.com. The schools can accumulate bonus Box Top points, and this will help increase the donations to other schools. It will amount to thousands of dollars if more people sign up. The local PTA has been diligently collecting and submitting Box Tops for many years, yielding thousands of dollars to our schools. But if we can get the electronic bonuses, this would boost the Lacey General Mills checks tremendously. I've been signed up for many years with the Winona Harbor School. My account reflects the lifetime earnings for Winona Harbor School as over thirty thousand dollars. It's over a period of years, but it's money that doesn't have to come out of the tax pocket. So please help our school and join the Box Tops for Education in shopriteformyschool.com. And if anyone knows of similar purchase-earning plans, please submit them to the school district, and thank you in advance, because I know many people will help and sign up for the electronic Box Tops. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
Good evening. Jeremy Norman, Barrow Avenue, Local Harbor. I know at this point it's a little bit old news, but I want to take this opportunity to thank the Township Committee for their support for the fishing derby that began back in June. I've got to say, I know you hear this all the time, and I guess it does doesn't hurt to reiterate, that the Public Works Department, the Recreation Department, the Police Department, they bend over backwards. They really couldn't have done a better job in supporting us and then helping us with that. And of course, the township businesses really came out of force as well. I can keep you here for quite a while tonight if I run the whole desk. We won't do that. If you watch the next Work for Education meeting in July, the entire desk will be there for the donations we got from businesses in town, and we're very happy with that. Tom Faulkner and Terry Stewart really did a great job supporting it as well. Now I'm going to jump from one event to another. I had, like, this is kind of like a realization of a dream for me. When I interviewed with Rich Startup fifteen years ago, probably about this month, fifteen years ago, for my job at Lacey High School, he asked me what I was going to do with my summers, I got the job. And I told him I wanted to be a documentary. I wanted to, you know, do documentaries in summer, like this was happening when you're making other plans. Never got around to it until this year. Over the winter, I got together with a couple of former students, and we decided to do a documentary on the history of Lacey Township. And I've gotten to a point now where I think we're going to be done in time to debut over the summer. So I went down to talk to Jim Wyland today, and we tentatively scheduled a date of August eighteenth to debut the... to debut our film. It's going to be a forty-minute song, and I'd just like to put a little bit of a save the date out there for you guys, just to maybe try to show up. It looks like we're going to do it over at the Lakeside Drive Beach in the outdoor project.
Deerhead Lake Drive.
Deerhead Lake Drive. Yeah, sorry, Deerhead. So he's talked to you already?
Yep.
All right.
I'm on board.
Very cool. So can we say August eighteenth is it?
We can say August eighteenth.
Not tentative anymore?
Not tentative.
Very, very cool. Glad to hear it. Once again, Jim Wyland Recreation, you know, walk in the door and right or left, you know, snap the fingers and let's make it happen. So I think it'll be a very cool thing. We've been working with the Historical Society. Of course, our town historian, John Parker, has been interviewed for it. L.A. Wright, Eleanor Ditten, Virginia Schoenberg, so a lot of the people that have been around here for a while. Plus, we've gone out and gotten a lot of other people to interview as well. I've been looking at the footage of the last couple of days. It looks awesome. It really does. The two former students that are working with me, Andy Daniels and Steve Praddock, are doing a great job, and they're making my job really easy.
You got popcorn for us to...
What's that?
Popcorn for us to...
We're working on it. Jim told me I had to have popcorn.
That's right. Watch the movie. You got popcorn.
We're working on it. So, yeah, but I just wanted to save the date out there and thank you once again for every time, you know, you come to anybody in this town. You guys are so supportive of these projects. We really love that. So, thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks very much.
Anything else?
See? I think just from the committee, a thank you to Jeremy and Tom for... they had a team that's going to be here for fifteen years taping these meetings for us, and you get very little recognition, so thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Motion to close. The floor. Move it.
Motion to adjourn. All up there?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Sure.
Second.
All right, all up there? All right, we're done, gentlemen.